Hi, good evening. I'm going to call to order Planning Commission meeting for Monday, December 14th. So at this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Murphy if she would like to leave us in the pledge this evening. And with that, Madam Secretary, if you could do this evening's roll call?
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present.
All right, and then we'll move on to item one, which is the approval of the minutes from our meeting of November 9th.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Right, if we can vote on that, please. All right, that passes this evening. So move on to public comment. Do we have any requests for public comment for anything that is not on our agenda this evening?
No, Chair Opal.
Great, thank you very much. Moving on to consent calendar, we do not have anything on our consent calendar this evening. So move on to public hearing. And the first item that we have this evening is a coastal development permit, CDP 20-0011, to permit a remodel, 1,322 square foot addition, and minor site improvements to a single-family dwelling on a coastal bluff lot at 37 Monarch Bay Drive. Do you have a staff report this evening?
Sorry, yes, Senior Planner John Champ will provide a staff report.
Good evening, Chair Opal and Planning Commissioners. John Champ, I'm the case planner for 37 Monarch Bay. It's a request for a conditional, or coastal development permit for the Brown residence. Just to give you a little site context, we've got, the project site is located within the RSF4 zoning designation. Site's approved with an existing 4,100 square foot, single-family, single-story residence with an attached three-car garage. The project is a coastal bluff lot and is located within the appeals jurisdiction of the Coastal Commission. Project scope requested is for the demolition of the existing 675 square foot garage and for the construction of a 1,322 square foot addition that would include two new bedrooms and bathrooms, laundry room, craft room, half-bath. It would also include the expansion of the kitchen, study, and master suite. In addition to that, it would have a new 796 square foot attached three-car garage. Facade enhancements would be incorporated into the project to enhance the modern architectural design of the project, as well as low walls, hardscape, and landscaping in the front of the property. Project is also requesting a bluff setback deviation from 40 feet to 28 feet. Should be noted that the site was previously entitled in 2015 and received the same bluff setback deviation. The geotechnical reports have been updated and analyzed by our city's geologist and have been confirmed that the current stability and site condition still remain, and staff is recommending the requested setback deviation from 40 feet to 28 feet from the bluff edge. This is the existing elevations of the structure. On the left is the front elevation. As you can see, the garage is significantly set back from the front of the property. And then you see the rear elevation on the right-hand side. So this is the site plan, which also illustrates the bluff setbacks, as well as the bluff edge and the location of the proposed additions. So as you can see, working from right to left, we've got the attached three-car garage that's proposed. C-word of that is the most sizable portion of the addition, which would incorporate the two new bedrooms, half-bath, and craft room, as well as some smaller additions towards the rear of the structure for the kitchen dining area, and then along the side, some minor expansion to the master suite and bathroom and the pool equipment enclosure. So as you can see here, the total setback here is labeled in yellow at 28 feet, and all the proposed improvements are landward of that. So there's no proposed foundational elements or additions located within that setback. Project is in conformance with all the applicable development standards, including setbacks, height, lot coverage, landscape, and the parking requirements. So this is just a zoomed-in version of the floor plan, here illustrating the locations of the additions and the layout of them. These, this is a rendering of the proposed elevations to enhance the architectural modern design of the home with new finished materials, including stone veneer, stucco, as well as the hardscape improvements that are proposed at the front of the property. The project requires a coastal development permit due to its proximity to a coastal bluff, as well as located within the coastal zone within a private community between the ocean and the first public road. Project complies with the necessary findings, given that the site is not located or impacting on any public access or environmentally sensitive habitat area, and is in compliance with all the applicable development standards located within, or within the city's local coastal program. Staff is recommending approval due to compliance with the findings, as previously stated, and is recommending approval of the coastal development permit. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Great, thank you for that report, Danny. I'm going to open it up to any Commissioner questions at this time. All right, well, then I'm going to open the public hearing. So do we have any requests to speak this evening on this item?
No, Chair Opal.
All right, so I will close the public hearing and then turn it over to Commissioners for any comments. Vice Chair Lawson?
Thank you. View the plans, went to the site, you know, I got to tell you, I believe it's a really nice upgrade to what's out there, a nice use of the property. It fits well within the neighborhood, there's no impacts on the environment, it's completely consistent with our zoning and our general plan, and as well as our local coastal program. So for those reasons, I would support this tonight.
Any additional comments?
I agree, meets all the seven coastal development permit requirements. It has no deviations requested, and the HOA is approved, so it looks like a great project.
All right.
I was just going to add, yes, when I was looking at this and I read through it, it just sort of strikes me as, don't mess with a good thing.
All right, so anybody wanting to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion. I move that we approve coastal development permit, CDP 2011011, to permit a remodel, 1,322 square foot addition and minor site improvements to a single-family dwelling on a coastal bluff lot at 37 Monarch Bay Drive.
Second.
All right, if we could vote on that, please. That passes unanimously, so congratulations if you are here on your project. So going to move on to item number three on our agenda, which is a coastal development permit, CDP 20-0016, to permit the reconstruction and expansion of an outdoor patio cover, deck, and minor site improvements for a single-family residence on a coastal bluff lot at 34781 Doheny Place. Do we have a staff report?
The project planner on this is also John Champ, Senior Planner.
Hello again. So before you, is a request for a coastal development permit for the Luke residence. Just to give you some site context, the property is located in the RSF3 zoning designation. The site's approved with an existing 2,000 square foot, single-family, single-story dwelling with an attached two-car garage. Site is a coastal bluff lot and is located within the appeals jurisdiction of the Coastal Commission. Project scope requested as part of this permit is for a new 480, I'm sorry, 458 square foot deck and solid patio cover, as well as a two-to-two-and-a-half-foot retaining wall in the rear yard, as well as hardscape and landscape improvements at the front of the property. This illustrates the existing conditions of the house and site. As you can see, it's a single-story house typical of the area, and we have the rear elevation here illustrating some of the framework of the requested patio cover and deck. This is the site plan of the proposed improvements. Illustrated here identifies the coastal bluff edge and 50-year erosion line, which is one line here at the top of the retaining wall on the seaward side of the lot. The curved orange line is the proposed retaining wall, and then in red is illustrated the 25-foot bluff setback. The proposed patio cover is located outside of the proposed setback and is approximately 34 feet from the designated bluff edge. As you can see here, there are also hardscape improvements requested throughout the site. Project table identifying the project's conformance with those standards, given that the project site is approved with an existing home, there are some non-conforming elements to the property in terms of the side yard setbacks, as well as the interior dimensions of the parking. However, all of the proposed improvements are in conformance with the necessary standards in terms of height setbacks, lot coverage, and bluff setbacks. This is the proposed elevations of the requested improvements. As you can see here on the right elevation, the roof line and roof configuration would extend over the proposed deck to create a solid patio cover. And then you can see towards the rear of the lot, on the right-hand side would be the proposed slump block wall that would provide some retaining element to have a little bit flatter of an area at the back of the lot. Project requires a coastal development permit due to its location adjacent to a coastal bluff. Project requires with the necessary findings for the coastal development permit, given that it is not located or near any environmentally sensitive habitat area and is not impacting any public access. Project conforms with the city's local coastal program and all the standards identified in the city's zoning ordinance. Staff is recommending approval based on the compliance with all the key findings for the coastal development permit, and is recommending approval. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
All right, thank you for that report, John. I missed, called you Danny while ago, and I apologize.
Quite all right.
Realize I made that mistake. So at this point in time, I'm going to open it up for any Commissioner questions to staff.
Mr. McCann?
Thank you. Does it, the retaining wall, that's just, it's just a stacked wall, no foundation or anything?
Correct, there's no footing proposed with the wall.
And there's no problem with that being in the setback area?
That's correct. The code does allow for minor site improvements, including walls or retaining walls, as so long as they don't modify the natural landform or significantly alter the natural landformations there. And based on the site, staff went out to the site with the city's geologist, reviewed the entire project's scope, and felt comfortable with their request.
Okay, and then I see, it looks like a stormwater system, that's new, right?
Correct, as part of the project, a sump pump would be installed to move water on the landward side of the wall to the street versus going down the bluff.
Was that a city requirement, or did the applicant just choose to do that?
That was a city requirement.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, I have a question. John, if you look at L1, it looks like the garage is undersized and the laundry room is, the wall, it looked like it was a two-car garage and the laundry room has been expanded. So it looks like it could be a two-car garage with a third car parked outside. Is that an optical illusion?
The dimensions of the garage that were provided to staff were, I believe, 20 feet deep by 17 feet wide, so the width, I believe, is the substandard element to it. Staff, due to the age of the property, there's limited records in terms of the original floor plan, improvements that have occurred over the many years it was built. So I don't believe that it's necessarily an optical illusion, but that is the information that staff has in terms of the dimensions of the garage.
Thank you.
Chair Lawson?
Thank you. John, real quick, so I'm looking at the photo on page 17 of your staff report, I think it's 17, which is a picture of the existing condition. What's, I'm struggling, not struggling, but I think what I want to make sure I'm clear on is there's already, or was a deck out there with a patio cover, and the proposal here is to really, is just redo it? And they were doing it without a permit, and so now they just have to bring that into conformance?
Generally, yes. I mean, there was some element of a patio cover, I think it was more of a lattice configuration and deck, they're proposing, essentially the project's scope resulted in removing the entire thing to rebuild it up to current code standards. So it's an expansion enhancement of what was previously there.
Okay, so how much of an expansion do you happen to know that? It's hard to tell with the existing plans, since there's something already there.
Right, no, we don't have the exact footprint due to the lack of records there, and the previous patio cover and deck have been demolished as part of the work that was previously completed. However, it looks to be, you know, if I was going to estimate, about a third larger than the previous footprint based on aerial photos that were previously evaluated.
Perfect, and then, I think you mentioned it, but there, so they had a patio cover, which was lattice, which would absolutely be allowed here, and all they're effectively doing, let's just say for the sake of this discussion, that there was a patio cover, they're covering it.
Correct.
Okay, which would also be allowed under our code.
That's correct, yes.
Great, thank you.
All right, any additional comments? Or I'm sorry, questions I haven't had this evening? All right, so I will open it up for public hearing. So do we have any requests to speak on this item this evening?
No, we do not, Chair Opal.
All right, so I will close the public hearing and open it up for Commissioner discussion. Commissioner McCann?
I think that it's a good improvement to the property. I find that it's in compliance with all the codes and ordinances. It's, you know, it's good that they are getting it permitted and doing it properly. It's to their benefit long-term to do that, so I'm in support of the project.
Any additional comments?
Yeah, I concur with Commissioner McCann's comments as well. Obviously, or to me, it looks like a nice improvement to an existing condition, and you know, anything that gets improved in the coastal zone or throughout the city, I'm a favor of. And, you know, in addition, I think that the, what is lost on me is the addition of that retaining wall will help aid in the drainage, which ultimately helps that slope, and the type of erosion issues we're seeing, everything we do that helps that, I think it should be supported, so for those reasons, I'm supporting this project.
Commissioner Donner?
I concur with the other Commissioners, and I'll support the project.
I don't have anything beyond, did you have anything? Okay, all right, I don't have anything in addition to what they've already done, so if you want to...
Yeah, so make a motion that we approve coastal development permit, CDP 20-0016, to permit the reconstruction and expansion of an outdoor patio cover, deck, and minor site improvements for a single-family residence on a coastal bluff lot at 34781 Doheny Place.
Second.
All right, if you guys could vote, please. So that passes unanimously, so congratulations on that, and getting back to your patio cover. All right, I'm going to move on to item number four, coastal development permit, CDP 20-0020, minor site development permit, SDP 20-0027M, to demolish a single-family residence and construct a two-story, single-family residence with a retaining wall greater than 30 inches in height, 30 inches in height, located at 429 Monarch Bay Drive. Do we have a staff report this evening?
We do. Senior Planner Sean Nicholas is available by phone, I believe, and John's going to run the PowerPoint. Sean, can you hear us?
Hello? Test one. Test one, can you hear me?
Yes, Sean, we can hear you. Give me just one second, I'm sorry, one moment. Okay, Sean, can you test it again? Okay, Sean, I think we're having just difficulties, I apologize, everyone. I think I just need to move Sean's presentation to my screen, and then I should be able to cast it, so if you'll just give me just a moment. Okay, Sean, are you there?
Test, yes, I am here, can you hear me?
Okay, we can hear you, and we can see you, okay.
Wonderful. Okay, good evening, Planning Commissioners, Sean Nicholas, project planner, is my PowerPoint up there on the screen?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is, Sean, I'm going to move it when you're ready.
Wonderful, so this... Perfect, so this is the Daplo residence, a request for a coastal development permit and a minor site development permit associated with a new two-story, single-family residence. Next slide. As you can see here, on the vicinity map, the project site is a rectangular lot, but it's considered to be shallow due to the depth of the lot, and it does back up to Pacific Coast Highway. Next slide. So as I noted, they are proposing a full demolition of an existing two-story, single-family residence with a two-car garage, and they're going to construct a new 4,490 square foot, two-story, single-family residence with a three-car garage, and will include a three-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath, multipurpose room, laundry room, and a great room. And that's what is triggering the coastal development permit, is the development of a new, demolition and development of a new home within the appeals jurisdiction of the coastal zone. Lastly, for the minor site development permit is for that over-height wall facing Pacific Coast Highway, which will be 7'8" as seen from Pacific Coast Highway. Next slide, please. Here you have the site plan in front of you, you can see in the middle, bubbled, is that average depth line pursuant to the requirements of the municipal code, and I know this is all laid out. In your staff reports, I just wanted to highlight, in particular, you can see top-right corner, you can see the 10-foot, 9-inch rear yard setback noted, and the fact that in a majority of these cases, the applicant has exceeded the minimum required setback, and this is the table directly, next slide, I'm sorry, next slide. The table directly from your, your staff report this evening, and you can see that the proposed project does meet all applicable development standards and exceeds those standards, especially on that side yard setbacks. Next slide, please. So you should be looking at the front elevation here, you can see that it is a modern-style home that does meet all of our height requirements. You can see here that a majority of the balconies are facing out, on the front of the property, facing towards the amazing ocean views and looking over towards the Landscape Mall. Next slide. Here you can see a cross-section on the left of the 7'8" wall that will be facing towards Coast Highway. It will be taller, facing inwards towards the residence at 8'6", and then have some other walls, and there's a lot of landscaping on that inside. That image on the right is actually the residence directly south of the project, it's at 431 Monarch Bay Drive, and you can see the new wall and landscaping there along PCH, and this wall is going to match it both in terms of height, materials, and finish, as well as landscaping, so as those fill in, it will have a consistent look across there. Next slide. So in conclusion, as though this is just a two-story, single-family residence, the architecture is consistent with the eclectic mix that is located within Monarch Beach. It does meet all applicable development standards, and the HOA has approved the proposed project, and staff has reviewed all the required findings and believes that both the CDP and minor site development permit findings can be met as provided in the draft resolution. Next slide, please. With that, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission adopt the draft resolution approving the CDP and the minor site development permit subject to those findings and attached conditions of approval. Next slide, which concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available if the Commissioners have any questions, and I believe my architect is also in the audience if necessary.
All right, thank you for that report, Sean, so I'll move it over for Commissioner questions at this time. Okay, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Lawson?
Yeah, Sean, how you doing? You hear me?
Well, sir, thank you.
Great, quick question for you, so the new wall on PCH that, I had a question on height, but I think you answered that, that it's going to be consistent with the adjacent fence, is there anything there today, or is this new, and is it located on the property? That's the only question I have.
So there is a wall, like many of the walls, along that front edge. It's different materials, it's some concrete block with also some just chain-link fence that is just overgrown by landscape. It's in about, I would say about six feet from where obviously it's going to end up as it's pushed out there. So it's in, and all the fences along that area, angulate in and out, but the materials are a variety, I would say primarily a block on the bottom and then comes up to chain-link fence, and that includes, on 427, the next residence north, it's primarily just a chain-link fence along the back, that you really can't see fortunately due to landscaping.
Great, thank you.
All right, and with that, I will open it to public hearing, so do we have any public requests to speak on this item?
No, we do not, Chair Opal.
All right, so I will close the public hearing and bring it back for Commissioner discussion. Commissioner McCann?
Sure. I'd like to congratulate the owner and the architect on doing a great job with such a shallow lot, with a great design. I think it'll be a big upgrade to the area, and they'll enjoy it for many, many years. I'm supportive of the project, I find that it's in compliance with all of the, you know, codes and requirements that we would have for it. I think having the wall match the neighbors in height, design, materials, style, all that stuff is great, and we can... hopefully fill that in and get a consistent look along PCH. So I'm, uh, in favor of the project.
Any additional comments?
No, I just concur the, with Commissioner McCann that the project, I mean, is really well-designed, really great-looking house. Particularly like the pizza oven, wish I had one of those. This meeting, I tend to walk away with a lot of good ideas of what I'd like in my backyard. Um, but there's a great plan and, um, fits really well with the character of the neighborhood and improvement, uh, along PCH will be beneficial to the entire community, so I'm fully supportive.
Alright, no additional comments? Alright, with that, I'll call for a motion.
I move that, uh, we approve coastal development permit CDP twenty zero zero twenty. Minor site development permit SDP twenty zero zero two seven M to demolish a single-family residence and construct a two-story, single-family residence with a retaining wall greater than thirty inches in height located at four-two-nine Monarch Bay Drive.
Anybody second? Alright, if you guys can vote. Alright, that too passes unanimously, you guys have an easy meeting tonight. Alright, congratulations. So with that, we'll move on to item number five which is site development permit SDP twenty dash zero 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 two to permit a duplex dwelling on a hillside condition to have three stories and retaining walls exceeding thirty inches in height with variance V twenty dash zero 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 one to one, exceed the maximum twenty-nine foot height limit and two, allow a reduced front yard setback and three, reduce driveway length and minor conditional use permit CUP twenty dash zero zero two M to allow the optional duplex parking arrangement located at twenty-six, two fifty-two Villa Canon. Do we have a staff report this evening?
Yes, associate planner Danny Giamidi will provide a staff report, thank you.
Good evening, Chair Opal, fellow commissioners. The project before you this evening is a proposal to, uh, allow the construction of a duplex dwelling on a steeply sloping vacant lot with variance request to allow less than required twenty-foot front yard setback in the RD fourteen zoning district. Also allow reduction in the twenty-foot driveway length and, and exceed a maximum twenty-nine foot height limit for structures with roof pitches of less than three-twelves within the hillside-conditioned lot. A site development permit's also requested to allow the residential structure in a hillside condition to have three stories and for retaining walls visible from the public right-of-way to exceed thirty inches in height. A minor conditional use permit is also requested to allow the optional duplex parking arrangement for duplexes on a lot less than fifty feet wide. So this is the site, um, as you can see, uh, it is along Villa Canion there, it's a six thousand six hundred and sixty-five square foot lot. It's located northeast of the intersection of Camino Capistrano and Villa Canion and it contains a significant slope, uh, almost a fifty percent slope. It's trapezoidal in shape and is bordered by a three-story, single-family dwelling with an accessory dwelling unit to the south uh, and open space to the north. It is zoned as RD fourteen, which is the city's duplex zoning. So these are the existing conditions out there on the site, um, as you can see, the stakes are up in these pictures. Um, and then this is the, uh, site survey identifying, uh, how we, the city of Dana Point, measures, uh, the, uh, the slope, uh, and it coming in at around approximately forty-eight percent. Um, in December of two thousand and three, a development that included a site design and structures that were similar to what the proposed design is today uh, was approved through planning commission and those, those, uh, entitlements included a variance for excess height as well as the reduced front, uh, yard setback and a side yard setback. The construction permits for that project were never secured and it expired two years after it was approved. So now moving on to the original preliminary review hearing, uh, the, this project, uh, you may remember it was first presented to, uh, the planning commission in August of two thousand and seventeen. After hearing both the staff and applicant presentations, the planning commission's general feedback was supportive of the overall design and the entitlement requests and based on the commissioner's comments, the summarized feedback which is, uh, outlined on this slide, uh, was, uh, summarized. Uh, some of the feedback included the design conforming well to the existing hillside. Moving a structure forward may be appropriate to minimize the grading resulting in livable area that's not below the ascending slope. Uh, increasing the ceiling height of the first-floor garage may be appropriate in order to elevate upper floors above the existing hillside. Um, and then a design that results in required garage and driveway parking while also reducing overall grading impacts, uh, would be appropriate. Since that meeting, the applicant has worked with, with our staff to refine the design based on the commissioner and both the staff comments. So this is the site plan. Um, as you can see here, uh, this is the proposed duplex dwelling, you have unit A on the right, uh, on the eastern side and then unit B on the, I'm sorry, on the, on the western and then unit B on the eastern side. Uh, unit A on the right side is an eighteen-hundred-and-eight square foot, uh, dwelling and a two-hundred-and-twenty-three square foot, single-car garage down here showing in yellow. And unit B on the left-hand side is just over two thousand square feet, twenty-fifty and, uh, it's, uh, also, th- this one has a four-hundred-and-twelve square foot, two-car garage. And each unit contains, uh, non-integrated first-floor garage space and two habitable levels above. So again, these are the garages in the front, there's a two-car for unit B, a single-car for unit A and they are not integrated into the unit, so you cannot access them internally. So this is the floor plan, uh, identifying, uh, each floor here, each floor level. Um, as you can see on the left-hand side at the garage level, you have the garages that were talked about in the previous slide. In the, on the second floor in the middle screen there, middle of the screen. It consists of a common area and a kitchen and dining and family room a- and a half-bath for each unit and then the third floor, uh, contains, uh, the three bedrooms and two full baths. Uh, unit B also contains a office on the third floor and I believe unit A, I'm sorry, unit, unit A has it on the third floor and unit B, it's, uh, there's an office on the second floor. Uh, each unit also has private outdoor open space, um, that's identified in green here. Um, there's decks on the front of each unit as well as private patio space on the back corners of the units. So as you can see from this table, uh, the development standard table on the screen, with the exception of the required front yard setback, driveway length and height limit, the project complies with the remaining development standards. Um, therefore, because of the non-compliance, uh, the three entitlements, uh, are requested for the variances, I'm sorry, three variance requests are, 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 uh, are proposed as well as the, uh, site development permit and conditional use permit entitlements. The following slides will outline those. So for the variance requests, uh, we have the reduction in the front yard setback, the reduction in driveway length and the increase in building height. So first off, we have this reduction in the front yard setback. As you can see, uh, this is the location of the structure in relation to the property line there. The RD fourteen development standards for the Dana Point zoning code require a minimum twenty-foot front yard setback. The design proposes a reduction in the twenty-foot front yard setback by locating the northwestern corner of the duplex, uh, I'm sorry, the northeastern corner of the duplex, ten feet from the property line. And although the setback is reduced, uh, on the eastern side, it gradually increases from left to right. Uh, as you can see, ten feet there, increasing to twenty feet and one inch on the right-hand side. It's important to note that this is one of two lots located with the frontage, uh, with, with frontage and therefore vehicular access along Villa Canion, uh, which also have steep, steep topography, which is unique for the majority of the lots within the city of Dana Point. As you can see here, um, this is open space, uh, the lots here all have, uh, they're through lots, meaning they have frontage both along Villa California and Villa Canion. The areas up here, uh, where they, they are developed are flatter and then they slope down towards the back. Um, the developed property to the left, uh, as you can see, it is pushed forward towards Villa Canion and it does not have any access from Villa California. Um, so really that's the only area to, to, to place the property. Alternatively, if we were to approve a compliant front yard setback at twenty feet, obviously it would push a large portion of the structure, uh, back into the hillside, which would result in more extensive grading and disturbance of the existing topography, which is contrary to the hillside-conditioned requirements, uh, in our zoning code. So the second variance request is for a reduction in the driveway length. This is quite similar to the previous slide. Obviously, uh, you know, if you don't have a twenty-foot long, uh, if you don't have a twenty-foot setback, you're also going to have a shortened driveway, uh, in this particular case. So, uh, a twenty-foot driveway is the minimum that's required, uh, in the Dana Point zoning code. Uh, this particular property, uh, has a ten-foot, four-inch driveway o- on the left-hand side here and obviously as the property moves from, uh, from east to west, the, uh, the driveway gets longer, uh, to a twenty-foot driveway on the right-hand side or twenty-foot, one inch. Uh, the twenty-foot driveway, uh, on the right-hand side, obviously the, the corner of that driveway is not gonna be as long, um, but it can accommodate a vehicle, um, and, and, and will be a, a parkable area. So obviously, frontage at the bottom of this very steep hillside would require substantial alteration of the n- natural topography again and, and in order to provide the twenty-foot deep driveway, um, you would also, uh, obviously push the rest of the house towards the, um, i- into the slope, uh, losing ventilation and light from, uh, for, for the primary residence. As I said earlier, this design accommodates the, uh, tandem or an additional garage or, I mean, parking space o- on the right-hand side here for, for unit A. And the third variance is for an increase in the maximum building height. Um, the hillside condition ordinance of the Dana Point zoning code allows residential structures in a hillside condition with flat roof elements to have a maximum height of twenty-nine feet. Uh, this duplex is proposed at a height of thirty-four feet, five inches and that's measured from the lowest finished pad elevation uh, shown here, one eighteen point two-five, to the top of roof at one fifty-two point seven-five. Due to the lot's approximate forty-eight percent slope, it's necessary to extend the structure to a reasonable height above the existing hillside. The architect has designed a twelve-foot-high ceiling for the garage and a nine-foot, one-inch ceiling height for the second and third stories in order to elevate a large portion of the second story's finished floor above the natural grade and that results in, uh, more daylighted and habitable space for each unit. At the planned height, a variance request, uh, to exceed the hillside condition height limitation by five feet, five inches is necessary in order to accommodate the proposed structure. Although exceeding the height limit, the proposed structure will be similar in height to the three-story, single-family dwelling uh, to the southwest of the subject lot and will not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with any limitations on other properties in the same zoning district with similar constraints. Further, the increase in height is based on unusual topographic conditions and, uh, unusual topographic, uh, conditions and, uh, unique dimension constraints, uh, of the site and not as a matter of convenience. So now we're moving on to the site development permit requests. Uh, as I said, the project also requests the approval of a site development permit in order to apply, uh, the hillside condition ordinance and increase the height for, uh, the retaining walls that will be needed to support the, um, the slope and the structure. So the first request, as I said, is to utilize the hillside condition ordinance. Um, with the exception of the variance to exceed the height limit, the proposed duplex dwelling has been designed in compliance with all of the provisions identified in the hillside condition. Uh, and that includes the maximum floor-to-area ratio, setbacks at upper levels, height above upper property line and it also results, um, in a reduction in overall grading. The lot was staked and certified in accordance with the city's, uh, stories, uh, story pool staking requirements and again, even though this exceeds the maximum allowable height limit, it meets all provisions outlined in the hillside ordinance. And shown here, uh, for visual purposes, uh, these are the setbacks at upper levels, uh, the green indicates the second floor set, additional setback that's required, which is five times the total width of the structure and then the second setback up here is for, uh, ten times to total width of the structure. Uh, also shown here is the twenty-five foot above property, or twenty-five feet below the property line indicator. Um, so it's, obviously it's well below the upper property line, so it does conform. Uh, the second site development permit request is for the over-height retaining walls that are located on-site, that'll be needed to support the structure and hillside. Um, the Dana Point zoning code states that retaining walls which exceed thirty inches in height and are visible from the public right-of-way uh, require the review and approval of a site development permit. Due to the forty-eight percent slope, uh, it results in a multiple terrace retaining walls and structural retaining walls that are needed for the site. Therefore, the project proposes the construction of over-height retaining walls which climb the slope along either side of the property. Uh, these help create, uh, access into the units uh, as well as form the back patio, private patio areas, um, and, uh, and, and the other portions of the front and back yards. The highest point of the retaining wall is gonna be on, uh, the, uh, southeastern corner here uh, at a, a height of about fifteen feet, actually at fifteen feet and from there, it, it, uh, it descends down, uh, as there's a cross-slope on the property, uh, and will be not visible from this side of the unit. And then it continues down along the, um, along the southwestern side towards the front of the property here. The duplex, obviously, as you can see, it'll be located in front of much of the retaining wall, so it, a lot of it is gonna be blocked by the actual, uh, structure itself and then the, and these walls are obviously, they're, they're consistent with similar residential development of sloping lots that are, um, that are constructed throughout the city, uh, including the neighboring property to the right, which, which also has retaining walls that are similar. Lastly, the final entitlement is the, uh, request for a conditional use permit to allow the duplex tandem parking arrangement on a lot that is less than fifty feet wide. Based on staff's measurements of the lot, uh, with the topographic survey that was provided, topographic and boundary survey, it was determined that the lot, um, was, uh, was narrow. Um, it was forty-nine point eight-two feet and therefore we could apply the duplex, uh, tandem parking arrangement in this case. So the Dana Point zoning code parking standards require the provision normally of a four, of four-covered parking stalls for a duplex parking arrangement. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, for a duplex development. The parking section of the zoning code states that when a duplex is proposed on a lot that's less than fifty feet wide, which as I said, this one is forty-nine point eight-two, uh, a reduction to the required number of parking stalls within a garage may be granted subject to the approval of a conditional use permit. Uh, these, uh, so therefore, because it, it does meet that, um, uh, that requirement, uh, they can, uh, they can apply the duplex parking arrangement here. The duplex parking, the duplex tandem parking stall has been designed with the duplex parking arrangement recommendations and follows the code standards for these arrangements. So if you take a look at the slide here, this is the exhibit that's proposed, or, uh, that's in the zoning code. The, the exhibit, it, um, it gives some recommendations as to, um, as to how to follow this duplex parking arrangement. Um, as you can see here, this is, this is slightly similar, there's an offset between the garages. Uh, there's also some landscaping that's provided, uh, on the landscape plan here. And, uh, and then there is, uh, obviously the duplex parking stall that's provided, so, a ta- tandem parking stall. So that, that covers that section. So this is the rendering. As you can see, it's a, it's a modern architectural styling, uh, it incorporates the flat roofs with the exterior walls, uh, in a sand finish type, uh, stucco color material. There's also wood railings and cable glass guardrails that are proposed on the decks and stairways. The openings, so the, the windows and doors, uh, the, the, oh, the, the windows are, are vinyl. There's also gonna be a glass combination aluminum roll-up garage door that's proposed for each, um, for each garage stall. And then the retaining walls, they're gonna be finished to match the lighter colored portions of the proposed duplex, like, uh, uh, that dark, well, that, that sand color. As you can see here. I'm sorry, this, so, so it's gonna match that stucco wall. So there, based on all that, staff finds the proposed project is consistent with the basis of approval for the requested entitlements. Uh, the staff's anal, based on the staff's analysis, staff determines the project is consistent with the policies and provisions of the city of Dana Point general plan as well as the Dana Point zoning code. Additionally, the findings contained in the draft planning commission resolution supporting approval of the proposed entitlement request can be made. Therefore, staff recommends approval of, uh, V twenty-dash triple oh one, SDP twenty-dash triple oh two and CUP twenty-dash triple oh two minor, subject to the conditions contained in the attached draft resolution. That concludes my presentation, staff and the applicant are available to a- answer any further questions, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that report, Danny. So I'm gonna bring it back for any commissioner questions at this time. Commissioner Donner?
Danny, the, uh, property next door looks like it has no setback. Their, their garages are like right at the street.
Yeah, so the property next door was approved, uh, prior to city incorporation, um, we did find a variance, uh, for that project which reduced the front yard setback down to five feet. Uh, I didn't measure the distance from the garage to their property line, uh, but, uh, it looks to be five, five feet or less on the eastern side and then it, it also gradually gets, gets wider.
And it, it looks like the, uh, the coverage is forty-nine percent, and, I mean, fifteen percent is the minimum and it has coverage of forty-nine percent, is that all behind the project then?
Much of the slope behind the project is, is going to be left untouched, correct?
And there's really no street parking?
There is, uh, street parking along the right-hand side, uh, but it is, uh, I believe that there is some sort of enforcement sign out there. Uh, but the, uh, every, all, obviously all the parking for this project is provided o- onsite.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Nelson?
Thank you. Couple of questions here for you, Danny.
Couple of questions here for you, Danny. So that's the original slide that you showed, how we measure the slope. More curious than anything else, do we measure from the high side or the low side of that slope?
We measure from the lowest point to the highest point on the slope, on the property. So from the highest topographic feature to the lowest topographic feature. And then we draw a line between the two, and that distance, we take the height difference between the two, subtract that, and divide it by the distance over the length between the two points.
Okay, and that gets you your slope?
Correct.
It looked like we were measuring on that diagram from the low side.
Oh, you know what? That arrow, yeah, is confusing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure we're not missing something.
That arrow is, it's supposed to be just a line.
Okay. The trash, I know that there is a note on the plans of trash, you're going to go under the stairs. Is that all going to go on one side?
I believe the trash will all be stored on one side below the stairs, correct, and screened.
And then, I'm curious, on the A's unit, which would be basically on the bottom of the hillside or adjacent to the existing home there, is there, and if you go to even that side elevation, you can sort of see the windows peeking up. Is there a plan for a privacy fence or anything there? Or is this sort of the front entry? And applicant can answer that. I guess the question really is about, are we going to end up with a fence on top of the wall?
Right.
On this side, because they're adjacent to other residents? I would assume on the other side you wouldn't, but I'd be interested to know.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good option. You know, other than the retaining wall, which is shown on this, and obviously, there's windows that are looking out towards that direction, and the guardrail that's there, there's nothing proposed on the plan. That being said, you know, that could be something that they could visit later on in the project if
They want to?
You know, if they saw fit, yeah.
So looking at the garage, obviously, it's much taller than normal. And I know, I've seen them in town, that we have lifts in certain garages. So if the applicant ran into a parking problem here and wanted to add the lifts, would that be just a building permit? Or would they need to show or something on these plans? I guess where I'm going with this is if they would need to get that approved, we want to include some discussion or conditions that they had that right to go do that down the road if they want to?
Yeah, that doesn't require any entitlements, because it's, you know, it's all internal, and that doesn't create any additional floor area or anything like that. They're meeting the required parking. So if they wanted to do that down the road in order to, you know, provide additional parking, I think that that's something they could definitely do, so long as they didn't reduce the width or length of the garages. There's also a height requirement, too. I'd have to go back and double-check what that is. It might be 7'6", but as long as they can provide the minimum height and, you know, make the building code happy, I think, you know, that'd be something they could accommodate.
Okay. Thank you. And then, going down, so we got this letter from the neighbor. I just want to, there's some good questions in here. Want to cover or ask a few questions here. So it relates to construction parking. I mean, it's a public street, so if there's, they're allowed to use the street. If they can't park there, they got to find somewhere else to go, basically, right?
Yeah, definitely. So they're going to have to provide all that information to the engineering and public works department. Obviously, encroachment permits are going to be necessary if they're utilizing the street as well as parking. There is, like I said, I think there is a parking enforcement sign out there that the, that hopefully would be utilized, you know, in a situation like that. The applicant is also, or the owner is also, maybe they talks with the neighbor. So that's something that hopefully, you know, they can continue to keep discussing as the project moves forward. But certainly, there's obviously conditions in here as well as rules that they're going to have to follow for the construction.
Okay. Speaking of rules, so we've got noise requirements and, you know, process. But what I wanted to find out is, from the, on the construction side, are they doing any piles or anything?
That's a good question. You know, are the applicant maybe able to answer that? Do you know if there are? Okay.
Drills, drills or impact? Okay. And then, I assume we've got some pretty standard requirements around construction fencing and security?
Yeah, all the standard, you know, onsite construction and offsite construction requirements are going to be outlined in that resolution. There's also been an additional resolution included, I mean, additional memo included that you received for the drainage requirements. So everything is going to be prepared and done properly so that, you know, there's no loopholes or anything that is done without first being reviewed by the engineering team.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that was it for me. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Commissioner McCann?
Thank you. Nice job on the presentation, Danny, by the way. There's kind of a mouthful.
It was.
So as a duplex, this will always only have one owner, correct? It's not saleable individually?
Correct. If down the road, they wanted to pursue some sort of parcel map to condominiumize the units, that would be something that they could do. That would require a come-back to planning commission for approval.
Okay. The patio off of the master on Unit B, does that have a roof of some sort over it? It looked like in a cross-section that maybe there was. When you had that side cross-section?
I think that's open, it's open, correct? Yeah.
Okay. There was a geology report down on this property, right?
There was, correct.
Okay. The little bit of landscaping between the two driveways, is that, that's not necessary for landscape coverage? Because you've got all that in the back.
Correct.
I'm just wondering, was there any discussion about just having that all paving? Because it just might be kind of tight to try and be maneuvering in already a short driveway.
Yeah, staff completely agrees with that. That's something, if they don't need it, it was a recommendation under the zoning code for the duplex parking arrangement to have some minor landscaping. But when you think about it, considering you're driving up Via Canyon, it's a short driveway, there's not a lot of backup space to begin with. There could be some visibility issues. We had some concerns about that as well. So that's certainly something that, you know, I'm assuming they want to provide some sort of landscaping to soften in the front, but that can be up for discussion.
I mean, maybe just a vine pocket or something.
Yeah.
So if we approve it, that, if they wanted to get rid of that later, they could. If they, by the time they pour in the driveway, they can just, okay.
As long as they meet their landscape coverage and they continue to do so, we should have no issue with that. That's fine. In fact, like I said, staff is encouraging, you know, lower plants be there. And when they're backing up out of that longer driveway, for instance, or even the shorter one, there's going to be some visibility issues with higher plants.
Yeah, I mean, in my opinion, just for functionality, is to not have that.
Okay.
But that's between the owner and the architect and you.
Okay, something we can work on.
Will the retaining, how will the retaining walls on the right side impact the neighbor on the right? Are they going to be like significantly above existing grade or below when there's a drop-off or?
Right, so as you can see from this image here, on the right side, yeah, the side right elevation, they're only as tall as needed to access the second floor. The architect did a pretty good job of trying to keep the walls as low as possible, especially towards the back, where it does hit the higher point on the other side. But, yeah, the walls are stepped to kind of go with the hillside. So they're not going to be too impactful. I don't have, you know, the elevation of the neighboring property here to tell you where this is going to be in relation to that. But I did visit the neighbor's property. I walked up those stairs, and they're pretty similar in height, based on the stakes. So I'd assume that this wall won't be incredibly tall.
And so approximately matches the neighbor to the right. Obviously, not exactly, but
Correct.
It's not like there's going to be some radical offset.
No, we tried really hard in working with the architect to design a structure that was similar in height. That wasn't, you know, overpowering, anything like that, but just whatever was needed to get them out of the hillside.
Okay. Where does the, the V-ditch across the back drains to the right?
Correct.
Where does that water go?
I believe that water continues down a water course out to the, out to the street.
So does the neighbor have a defined channel that's going to pick that up? Because you're going to be concentrating flow
Yeah, that
Into that location.
I believe there's some sort of drainage on that side, but that is, again, something that, as part of these conditions and the new one that's added, is going to be, you know, is going to have to be reviewed and altered if necessary to support any changes to that V-ditch, so.
Well, what I'm concerned about is dropping a concentrated flow onto the neighbor and then causing erosion there. I mean, so it sounds like it's going to get handled. I just really like to make sure that that gets, because it could be picked up in a pipe and brought down
Yeah, certainly.
On this guy, or if the neighbor doesn't have a really good channel to receive it.
Right. We'll make sure to
So can we add a condition to that effects, then?
I believe, can we add an additional condition related to that? I don't see an issue with that, yeah.
I mean, I've not even been saying it has to, like, if the neighbor had a V-ditch right there that would receive it?
Yeah.
Boom, great, I don't care, but I just, I don't want to dump.
Yeah, because, you know, I know that that V-ditch that, on the left-hand side, I know where that comes from, but the trees are obscuring that view there. So, yeah, that is something that we can add a condition for to protect that in place or to expand it as necessary to, you know, for the
Just to make sure it's properly, you know, engineered to receive the water.
Definitely, I'll take note of that.
Okay, thanks.
No problem.
I have no further questions.
Oh, we do. Thanks.
I just have a couple of questions in that. I have many neighbors who ask questions, the same kind of questions I have, when you're having kinds of instability. And Canone has had a history of being quite a little run down the hill. Not only from the hill itself, but from the way that the asphalt is set up from above. And then it all runs down to just past those homes and sort of just surfaces there a lot of times. And so, you know, we may get a real wet winter, maybe not, but at the bottom where, of Canone, where it goes back up the hill going the other direction and then what is being contemplated to take this into consideration?
You mean for the, for the street?
Yeah, yes, because we get a lot of water up there.
Yeah.
That comes down and it washes down. For feeling, if somebody's building a house on the way down, a great deal of water that just, a lot of times just sits at the bottom there.
You know, that's a good question. I think the city engineer, I'm assuming that they have, you know, they have detailed drainage plans for that area and have a certain type of, you know, future review and I'm sure that they have some sort of, some sort of future plans in place when the, because there are some other projects that will be, that are contemplated to start construction in the next few years here on the other side of Via Canyon. There's multiple properties there, I believe. And with that, I'm assuming that there's going to be something done there, but that's probably a better question for our city engineer. Wouldn't be able to answer that. I wish I could.
You jumped over that one.
Yeah.
It's okay. That's all I have.
All right, so I don't have any additional questions, so I will go ahead and open public hearing. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
There were two public comments which we provided to you already. There are no further comments.
Great, thank you very much. So with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back for commissioner discussion. Anybody want to volunteer?
Thank you.
Okay, so I think, you know, A, this project's been before us more than once. I actually went back and looked at the slide deck from the original presentation where there was, or not presentation, but it was a, I think it was a like a workshop or something, where we had a little bit of a discussion about different options. And the direction, you know, that we gave was to look at the increased height of the garage, which would limit some of the landform challenges. You know, and certainly, it's, that part of our process is not a guarantee, nor is it, you know, we're telling anybody what to do. But based on what I'm seeing, it does look like the applicant followed some of the direction that we provided, which hopefully was helpful for them. I love the redesign. I think it looks much better than the other project that was already approved, which had like a barrel roof on it. This is just a really nice, clean, contemporary look. While we're not a design review, since it's on a hillside, it's just nice to see a project that fits in well. Great use of material with some of that, the stone or block and brick, as well as the wood. So overall, if this was just a normal project on a street, it, you know, it didn't have a bunch of variances, it would be a slam dunk. Variances, for me, are always tricky, because I think they can be abused. I've never seen them abused, never seen them abused in this town. And I've rarely seen one approved. They're hard to get, but they're appropriate. And I believe that variances are part of our code. They're not a loophole, and they're not some sneaky way to get around the obligations of our zoning code. They're in there for a purpose, and the purpose is for projects very similar to this, where you've got 48% slope, which is a demanding type of environment to build in. And on top of that, you've got a street that's sloping. You've got everything working against you here. And everything working against you, you know, double with the, with that big of a slope. So it's an appropriate place to apply variances. You know, I think it'd be easy for the applicant to drop down the garage and, you know, abuse the opportunity to push up the upper floors. But clearly, the design was done in a manner to try to limit the hillside impacts and provide enough natural light for the inhabitants, which I think is also critical. If we didn't provide the variance and they built this the way that they would have to build it, you'd end up with a bunker with no windows. And I don't think any of us want to sit up here and force designs like that. So, you know, for that reason, and all the reasons required for variance, I'm in full support of the height increase. I think it's a side benefit and one that, you know, I would just ask the applicant to make sure they consider, or whoever ends up, if you're not the owner, communicate to the owner that there's a great opportunity here for lifts if there becomes a parking problem. You know, I would put car lifts in these garages. I've investigated the price, and they're not that expensive. And it certainly makes parking a lot easier. I'm also in support of the front yard setback, which includes the reduction in the driveway. Not using the neighbor's property as a justification. It just, it makes sense here not to push this building further back into the hillside. There's a reason the neighbor's home is built the way that it is built, and it got an appropriate variance. And then there's a reason this is being built the way it's being built or proposed, and that's to limit the impact to the hillside. So I'm in full support of that, and I'm in full support of the project. I think this design is just a continuation of good design, but it's gotten better since the last time we saw it. So thank you. You have my support tonight.
Any additional comments? I think Eric covered quite a bit there.
Yeah, I would wholeheartedly echo what Vice Chair Nelson said. This is an extremely challenging site. If I'm not mistaken, our hillside ordinance kicks in at 20% slope. Is that right? This is like, you know, 150% higher than that. I mean, this is a crazy, steep site.
Yeah, we looked at the averages, and they were all between 20 and 30. And this one was well over.
Yeah, so, you know, my hat's off to tackling it. I'd like to see it get built. Hopefully, the owner will move forward. I'm, given, you know, what Vice Chair Nelson said, which is very appropriate, I'm supportive of the increase in height, the reduction of the front yard setback, the reduction of the driveway length. And I wish you luck.
Anything to add?
Ditto.
All right, so I will call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that we approve site development permit SDP-20-0002 to permit a duplex dwelling in a hillside condition to have three stories and retaining walls exceeding 30 inches in height with variance V-20-0001. with variance V twenty dash zero 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 one, to, one, exceed the maximum twenty-nine foot height limit, to allow a reduced front yard setback, and three, reduce driveway length, and minor conditional use permit CUP twenty dash zero 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 two M to allow the optional duplex parking arrangement located at twenty-six, twenty, twenty-six, two fifty-two Via Canyon, um, with the added condition that the, that the outflow of the V-ditch, drainage outflow, be, you know, kinda fully scrutinized and either put into a pipe onsite, or make sure it's well-connected to the neighbor to the right.
I'd second that.
All right, if you could vote, please. All right, another unanimous passing, so congratulations. And from there, so from there, we're gonna move to old business to item six, which is a short-term rental subcommittee update.
I guess that would go to me, then. 'Cause I volunteered to, uh, give you guys an update. I mean, as you probably recall, the SDR committee, um, you know, was formed to start to look at our short-term rental ordinance and, um, start the process of preparing a pilot program, a three-year pilot program. And then, we, we talked about doing it in a number of different phases. Um, this, the subcommittee is made up of, uh, several staff members, including Development Director Brenda, I'm gonna butcher this, was, was Neskey, right? I just call you Brenda, so, my apologies. Uh, Community Development Manager Jeff Rossler, who's, um, you know, oversees most of the code enforcement components, Senior Planner John Jampa, Commissioner Donner, and then myself. And we've been meeting actively since, um, this body decided to, um, appoint both of us to the committee. Um, I think we've had three meetings so far, and, um, we've really, staff, you guys have done a great job, uh, making some big progress in the last few meetings, which is great to, to kinda see the plan that's about to roll out. Um, and I'm excited certainly to share it tonight, so, um, and you can put on the next slide if you'd like. So, the, the current approach that we're moving down, which was one that was directed and recommended, I believe, by the city council, is, um, sort of a two-pronged approach. Really, it's gonna ensure that whatever pilot program we ultimately recommend to ci- the city council is designed with an enforcement, um, tools and mechanisms that, you know, effectively address those issues that we've commonly heard, reported. And just looking at some of the drafts, there's some really, um, good proposed changes. Um, but, but we're not just as a committee making these changes. Um, the next step is, is really the outreach efforts that are going to take place. If you change the slide. Um, number of handouts are being prepared. We have, I tried to count this all up. For each phase, we've got at least six meetings that will be discussing, um, the proposal. So, the first step is just, you know, sort of this detailed analysis, and then update of our business regulations. Prior to any of that being done, um, there'll be four stakeholder meetings. Those are gonna be the committee and the stakeholders, two public outreach events, along with, um, our hearings here, as well as the, uh, city council. And that's all gonna be done, hopefully, um, you can see the calendar here on, the phase one calendar here, um, by April, if all goes well. And if, um, you know, all the different stakeholder meetings, you know, go as planned, and the outreach events work, and we've got the feedback that we need, uh, hopefully, this will be in a, in a state that the city council can act on it by then. And then, from that point, we move into phase two, which is the crafting of the, um, uh, three-year pilot program. And that, again, has a significant amount of meetings, not only with stakeholders, uh, but public outreach events. Uh, we'll be at the farmer's market, um, and a lot of this is education, but some of it is, is, uh, you know, we want more input. And, um, you know, what I'd close with is, I've never seen such a robust outreach effort on something, um, in Dana Point, much less, um, Southern California. So, great job, you know, putting this all together. Um, it's been, it's been an interesting process, and I've learned a lot about short-term rentals in a few months, and look forward to, uh, learning more, and I'd, you know, look to Commissioner Donner if he had any further comments, um, about the process.
Yeah, the, the, the two things that, uh, that I came away with is, the first phase is basically, uh, redoing our, our, um, business regulations, which will incorporate the, the things that we think we need after we've listened to the stakeholders. And the second phase will be a public outreach, and I think, uh, you know, then to implement the, uh, the short-term rental. So, um, that, the, at first, I was a little confused of, of, of the two steps, because it, it seemed like we were, uh, repeating the things. But now, when I step back and looked at the, the stakeholders, getting all their input, and then going to city council and getting the regs approved, and then rolling out to the public of what we've done as an educational process first, because there's a lot of, I think, uh, fear of the problems. And I think one of the initial reports that I saw was a lot of, of violations. And a lot of the violations were administrative, people didn't get a permit. But the actual noise complaints that, uh, was reported by the enforcement group, I think there was three or four. So, that was dramatically different than, than I thought. So, um, I think the feedback that we've gotten so far is, uh, the public reaction is very negative, but I think, uh, the educational program, uh, should, should offset that, and I, I think, uh, I think it's gonna work.
Right, and that would be my report for tonight, unless any of the, my fellow commissioners have any questions or thoughts.
No, thank you for that, appreciate it.
Great, thank you. It was fun. That concludes my presentation.
Moving on for new business, there's no new business this evening. Any staff reports?
Um, just to say that we are gonna be dark until, um, the second meeting in January. We, um, have canceled our next holiday, um, meeting, obviously. And then, January eleventh is the next one, and we're gonna be canceling that, so January twenty-fifth. So, lots of time to rest, relax, enjoy your family, have a happy New Year, and stay safe. Thank you.
All right, and then, any commissioner comments this evening? Commissioner McCann?
Um... I can't tell you how excited I was to see Dana, um, City Hall getting painted. I, I have hated the yellow paint on City Hall, and the architecture screamed for gray paint. And you got it done, Brenda, so... So, thank you, I know you labored over those color swatches, and had to twist a few arms, but it looks fantastic, it looks so much better and appropriate, so thank you for getting that done. Um, I haven't been in the lobby recently, but is there a picture of Dana Point Harbor on the wall by chance?
Thanks to Stacy, there definitely is.
Fantastic, thank you. Yeah, I was sad to see Avalon there, when we have such a beautiful harbor. Um, and then I wanna wish, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everyone here.
Yeah, good, uh, hope you guys have a great New Year and, uh, a really nice Christmas, Hanukkah, it's Hanukkah now, so... Um, but, um, you know, health, wealth, and happiness to all of you, and we'll see y'all next year.
I will second that myself, so... And I will just say, be safe, because we can get a little out of our range, particularly with younger kids, or even, you know, we've, we've gotta be real careful right now, all of us do. Always just.
Yeah, we have the underlying condition, A G E. Um, yeah. And I would, when, the last project, I was thinking about, they probably have to have a physical requirement. Did you see how long, how many steps they have to do to get to that third floor, so...
Just, just come to my house.
Yeah. Anyways, I, I'd wanna wish everybody happy holidays, thank you.
And with that, I will adjourn to our January twenty-fifth meeting.
Thank you.